Thank you. I'll have to bring treats next time. Welcome to the zoning board of adjustment meeting, May 21st, 2015. Housekeeping items. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms to the left of the dais. Please fill out a request form with agenda item that you wish to speak to and hand it to the secretary. Cell phones and electronic devices. At this time, we'd like to ask if any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silence. If you need to take a cell call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting will not be disrupted. Item number one, approval of the May 7th, 2015 zoning board of adjustment meeting minutes.
Would you approve?
Motion's been made by Steve and seconded by Jan to approve the minutes of the May 7th meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Are there any other items? Yes, Vicki.
Ten of you sitting up on the dais right now, so that means that John, you are a voting member today, and Galen, you're not unless someone steps down off the dais. Thank you.
Thank you. If not, I'd annotate a motion to adjourn.
Would you adjourn?
Steve made the motion to adjourn and Dennis seconded it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Welcome to the City of Rapid City Planning Commission Meeting, May 21st, 2015. Housekeeping items. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms to the left of the dais. Please fill out the request form with the agenda number you wish to speak to and hand it to the secretary. Cell phones and electronic devices. At this time, we'd ask that if any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silence. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting will not be disrupted. Consent calendar. Items one through six have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by a planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to the city council. City council will make the final decision with the exception of item five, 15 PD 0113. The planning commission's actions on this item is final unless any party appeals a decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the Community Planning and Development Services Department by the close of business the seventh full day following the action of the planning commission. Are there any items one through six for separate consideration?
Item number four, Madam Chair.
Okay, item number four. Okay, thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve items one through six with the exception of item number four. Steve made the motion and Andy seconded it to approve items one through six with the exception of four. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Item number four. Andy.
Madam Chair, I'll be abstaining from item number four.
Would you approve item?
Motion's been made by Stephen and seconded by Karen to approve item number four with Andy abstaining. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. We are now to the regular agenda items. Item number seven.
Thank you, good morning. Item number seven is 15 PD 014. It's a final plan development to allow professional and medical offices as part of a two-phase construction project located on approximately 4.33 acres of property at 5550 Bent Drive. This is southwest of the intersection of Katron Boulevard and Nugget Gulch Drive. Let me take you through some slides now. The applicant is proposing two separate two-story office buildings that are comprised of 5,700 square feet per floor, and the first to be done upon approval by planning commission, the second within the next five years. The applicant has requested an exception to waive the requirement for a screening fence on property to the south, between this property and property to the south. You can see on the zoning map here, the properties on general commercial district, low-density residential to the south, which would require that a screening fence be provided. In lieu of the screening fence, the applicant is proposing to provide a vegetative buffer consisting of 17 evergreen trees, and I'll show you the landscaping plan in a moment. Air view of the property. You can see existing commercial development located to the north and to the west. Site plan, what they're proposing, showing the parking layout, you get an idea of the topographic constraints on the property, especially on the south sides of the property. Very steep terrain, which would make a screening fence, as required by ordinance, to be rather ineffective. This is a landscaping plan showing the vegetative buffer that they are proposing to provide, as well as provide buffering on the site from busy Katron Boulevard on the north side of the property. Layout of the buildings, 5,700 square feet, as I said, per floor, elevations. Look at the site from Katron Boulevard. Like I said, the top graph constraints are pretty steep. View of the sign posted on the property. View of Katron Boulevard looking to the south and east, and to the west and north. Nugget Gulch, please note that the access to this property will be taken exclusively from Nugget Gulch. There will be no access that's being taken from Katron Boulevard, and no access from Bent Drive located on the west side of the property. View on Nugget Gulch looking into the property. This, for the purposes, I want you to take a look at the residential development that's located on the left of your screen there would be the nearest residential use. As you can see, the hill, the topography of the hill itself does provide some buffering between the commercial use and the residential use. Based on the topographic constraints of the site, staff is recommending that the proposed exception to waive the requirement for the screening fence be approved, and the vegetative screening be provided in lieu of that. Staff recommends that the application be approved, the stipulations outlined in the staff report, and we are available for questions at this time.
Motion's been made by Steve and seconded by Jan to approve. Are there any questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Item number eight.
Item number eight is 15 UR 9, a conditional use permit to allow an on-sale liquor establishment for Boyd's Liquor located at 1424 Mount Rushmore Road. In particular, the applicant is requesting that the on-sale liquor establishment to allow for a larger sample size so that customers can come in, try more of the higher or upscale wines, and try them before they actually buy them. State law limits them to three half-ounce samples without getting a conditional use permit, so they'd like the opportunity to be able to provide a little bit more. It's going to be accessory to the liquor store. There'll be machines, and members will use an AccuServe smart card to purchase the wine after they've shown their IDs. Properties located on Mount Rushmore Road, Arterial Street on the city's major street plan, properties on general commercial district. If you remember Old Boyd's, this is the new version built in 2012. Variances were granted for screening fence on the east side next to the residential property, and for some of the setbacks on the property. This is what's existing on the property today, and this is the layout. They want seating for 10, and this is the tasting area. Front door is right here. Sign is posted on the property. Looking to the west, across the street, commercial uses on Mount Rushmore. Looking south on Mount Rushmore Road to north. This is the screening fence that's on the east property line. The variance was to allow that four-foot height, which is what is required by ordinance, and looking along St. Cloud Street, and to the west on St. Cloud. The proposed on-sale use is in conjunction with the liquor store for sampling. Staff recommends that the conditional use permit be approved with the stipulations noted in the staff report. The applicant is here to answer any questions. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Motion's been made by Steve and seconded by John to approve with stipulations. Are there any further comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Item number nine.
Sorry about that, didn't realize that was number nine. Number nine is 15 PD 11, a final plan development to allow sculpture garden at Haley Park between Main Street and St. Joe on the west side of downtown. Start your presentation so we can see where it's located. Properties on Park Forest District. There's the park offices and other park amenities located on the property today. The proposed sculpture garden will be located in this area. It's accessory to the existing park. However, the applicant is requesting that we acknowledge the reduction in parking from 17 to zero for the existing park. There's no onsite parking. Parking that is in the area is located in the right-of-way along West Boulevard on this west side. That's traditionally what's been used as the parking for the property. The applicant, First Nations Sculpture Garden, has entered an agreement with the City of Rapid City for the construction of the sculpture garden at this location. In particular, this is going to be two phases. Phase one includes four sculptures, and in the center, a centerpiece of a split rock, and then some work with the pathways, either the removal or establishment of them. One of the stipulations is that the applicant coordinate with the city parks department and public works department on their pathway and sidewalk locations, and irrigation changes and everything with this property, this project. This would approve phase one and the future phase two in this final plan development. Here's showing what potentially would look like with the pathways. The applicant is also requesting two temporary signs to go up, one on St. Joe and one on Main, just announcing that the sculpture garden is coming soon. The proposed signage is in compliance with the sign code. Here's some mockups of the potential sculptures, which will be built in phase one. This picture shows the location and the sign located on the property. This is looking north on West Boulevard, across the street to the east, south, looking along St. Joe to the west, to the east, looking from the west back towards the east at the location of the sculpture garden, and along Main Street. The exception to the parking was previously acknowledged through an 11619 South Dakota Codified Law review, which doesn't, isn't enforced really anymore with the city, so we just wanted it to, through the final plan development, to acknowledge the reduction in parking that had previously been granted. With that, staff's recommendation is to approve with stipulations.
Motion's been made to approve by Steve and seconded by Jan. Now we'll have our comments. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see in the project report, there's a reference to a memorandum of agreement with the city for the construction that's proposed. Could you tell us a little bit about that? That wasn't online.
I'll allow the attorney's office to answer that.
Okay. Yes, I drafted an agreement between the First Nations Sculpture Garden Corporation and the city. It was, it went through the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I think it might have spent a couple months there talking through, they mostly work with the parks board, to talk about how this would look. And then it was approved by council. I'm not sure on the date, and I don't have a copy here, probably a year ago. And they've been raising funds in the meantime. Part of the MOA is that they come before you to obtain the necessary licenses, permits, requests, permission to have it there, to have their planned sculpture garden in this The terms of the agreement that you might be related or interested in are, they are raising the full amount of the cost of the improvements, and making some permanent improvements to the park, such as the walkways and things of that nature. They're retaining ownership of the sculptures themselves, but we have, I think, 25 years that they're going to display them here, and then, so it's a long-term project. If you have any specific questions about the terms of the MOA, I can address those.
I do. My question is, has all the money been raised?
I'm not sure.
My question is this, Carla, is will the construction begin on that site and then have to be delayed for future fundraising so that the project doesn't have any designated start or finish? It's a lovely park. It's wonderful, and I think that our approval is imminent here, but it's the construction phase in there that if all the money isn't there and they get halfway done, they have to shut down for a period of time. Is that subject to deterioration of what has been constructed, or are any of those issues?
Well, I know there's a requirement in the MOA that the construction take a set amount of time. I don't remember if it's 12 months. I don't have it in front of me, I apologize. I know that there is a limit, limitation within the MOA on how long construction can take, just to address that concern. I believe the consultant may be here and may have an update for you on the money side of it.
That would be good.
Mike Stanley with 42nd Street, we're the consultant working on the design and have been working with the group. No, construction will not start. It's divided into two phases, and they're going to fundraise separately for those two phases, so it's planned that we're going to fundraise first, the money will be secured before we start any construction, because I also don't want it halfway done, and then it's set for years and years and years. So, no, the plan is, is to fully fund phase one, then start construction on phase one.
And phase one, Madam Chair?
Yes.
And phase one, are the walkways as well as four sculptures?
Yes. I can show you if you could put the...
I did see online that, yeah.
And the reason phase one is laid out, we're, as Fletcher stated, we're going to be working with the parks department and public works on how they want to keep the sidewalk in, and we're fine if they would like to keep it in. The reason phase one is planned as this portion, wrapping around like this and like this, is that it gives a, it gives the, phase one could stand on itself as complete. We have the necessary connections, and if for some odd reason or something, this back half was never built, phase one would still be in itself in entirety, and it would work alone, standing alone. And that's one of the reasons why we did it like that, is so all of a sudden, it's just like you don't get to the end of the street, and there's three diamonds at the end.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Andy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, I got a question as well. Just out of curiosity, I can't remember what the existing structure is being used for, but is it, is that going to be used in conjunction with the park?
Existing building?
Yes.
No. Well, not, the existing building use is not tied to the sculpture display.
Okay, but what is it now?
That's the Parks and Recreation Headquarters Office.
Okay, at one time, it was a...
Historical.
It was, it was the museum, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Karen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, it's the same question that you talked about with the sidewalks.
Yes.
I noticed that you wanted to take that one south side sidewalk out, but you just said that you were working with the parks department, and might keep that sidewalk in there?
The, we've had a couple rounds of meetings with public works and the parks department, and from one of those meetings, it was discussed, maybe that part, or maybe that sidewalk connection should be removed, and this plan reflects that last discussion. Since then, and going through this process with the plan development, and that came out in the staff report, is actually this parks department uses that this piece considerably more for maintenance than we had initially anticipated. So, I'm right now looking at this sidewalk is actually going to, I would say 99% going to be put back in, well, remain, and this sidewalk at this section, remain.
Okay, that was my question. I just wondered why they were going to take that out. So, if you have minor changes like that through this plan, you're able to do that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. There was some concern, they've noticed people think this is a street. They've driven through it, and it's, they thought, well, maybe we could solve some other-ish park issues at this time, but the more we've gone around and back and forth on it, it's probably best that it stay in.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
I just want to add a comment. I really feel strongly about keeping the sidewalk. It's really important because so many more people are walking, and it's so important because otherwise you just kind of have trampled grass and weeds. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just follow-on comment, the, since there is no parking on the site, it's a pedestrian access site, and is there anything in the plan to provide for any additional safety to pedestrians trying to access the deal? I think the Parks and Rec occupy the building surface on there, so I'm assuming some of their vehicles use the parking that is available, street-side, and other people that want to walk may do that by walking to the site, and that means crossing two very busy streets. I go and come on that every day, twice a day, so are there any provisions at the city level in this plan for development for at least evaluating pedestrian safety?
We're, we'll, and that's one of the, I believe one of the stipulations is we'll work with public works and try to, and kind of follow their recommendation and what they would like to see.
And then finally, if I may, one other question. Are there any other restrictions with these? Is this park an open park to the public, or are there restrictions with regard to activities?
I don't believe there's any restrictions. It would, it would follow the same rules as every, all the other parks for open and closed times and pedestrian access.
Very good. Thank you, Mike.
Any other comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Item number 10.
Thank you. Item number 10 is 15 PD 012, a final plan development to allow townhome development on approximately, excuse me, 1.177 acres of property located south of Katron Boulevard and east of Champion Drive in northern Rapid City. The applicant is requesting a total of 12 townhome units to be located in six structures. The applicant is requesting exceptions to reduce the minimum required lot size from 4,000 square feet on three of the proposed lots, and to reduce the minimum required front yard setback on Catherine Avenue from 25 feet to 20 feet on all the proposed lots. Let me take you through some slides. Zoning of the property is medium-density residential district, which does allow for the development of townhomes, duplexes, single-family residences. Should take the time to point out here that if the applicant were proposing to do single-family residences or duplexes, the minimum required setback along Catherine Avenue would be 20 feet. The applicant is requesting reduction from 25 to 20, which would be the standard for any single-family residence in the district. Air view of the property, there's no structural development today. However, you should note that there is a drainage channel located along the southern boundary of all the properties. The applicant's reduction, the requested front yard setback is also in part due to topographical constraints, part of that drainage channel. Look at the building envelopes and layout of the sites. A couple things to note here. First, on the lot 1A, proposed vacation easement was submitted, reviewed by staff and approved to vacate a nine-foot section of non-access easement to allow the proposed driveway to meet the width requirements. Also note, the applicant is proposing to put patios on the south sides of all the properties. This combination results in a limited building envelope, which further justification for the reduction in the front yard setback along Catherine Avenue. I should also note, the applicant has submitted a minor plot application to plat these lots. The applicant's, note here, oh, it's kind of tough to see. The applicant has requested reductions in the minimum lot size from 4,000 square feet to, I just can't read it, but on lots 1B, 1C, and 1D. Smallest of those three lots would be lot 1D, which is being reduced to 3,760 square feet. Lots 1B and 1C are slightly larger than that, but less than the 4,000 square foot required by code. As a part of, or part of the review, we did note that the overall lot density on these properties does remain at about 4,200 square feet. In other words, the minimum lot size averaging out over the type, the whole of the development does meet the minimum required lot size, but based on the limited building envelopes and the limitations of the site, some of the sites did need to be smaller than required by code. Layout of the proposed townhomes. There are one-story townhomes, one-stall garages. Minimum parking will be provided through the garage and the parking pad on the driveway. Look at the site with the sign posted on the property. This is looking towards the intersection of Catherine and Champion. I'll look on Catherine looking to the west, Catherine looking to the east, as well as the single-family residences located across the street of Catherine. Look at Champion Drive to the south, Champion Drive looking north, and view of the site from the other direction. Based on the constraints to build a bill... Based on the constraints, build, oh, the building envelopes, staff did determine that the requested reduction setback and the requested reduction in the minimum lot size on three of the lots would be justified. With that, staff is recommending that the application be approved with these stipulations outlined in the staff report.
Motion's been made by Steve and seconded by Dennis to approve. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number 11.
Item number 11 is 14PD043, a final plan development for a commercial development located off of Highway 16 and Table Rock Road. In the past, we've done some plan development in this area that's shaded pink, an office commercial district for townhomes and single-family development. And earlier today, we saw a vacation of right-of-way for Northview Drive and Silver Nugget Drive. This is for a 4,000-square-foot dental office building for Chris Dental. Currently, the property is void of any structural development. The applicant is requesting two exceptions to reduce the minimum required side yard setback that abuts the street, being Highway 16, from 25 feet to 20 feet, and an exception to waive the screening requirement along the east property line where it abuts those proposed townhomes and single-family in the office commercial district. The South Dakota Department of Transportation has concurred with the proposed reduction from 25 feet to 20 feet along this west property line. The reduction in the setback there also moves the proposed development five feet further away from the residential development. As you can see, there's some hatch markings here. This is proposed Phase Two with some additional parking. They'll have to come in with a major amendment to the plan development to, before they construct that second phase. At that time, we'd also like to revisit the screening requirement, but let me give you some justification for waiving that screening requirement. Located, this is a flagpole lot, so there's not a lot of development on this north side. Also, putting a screening fence in that area would, would have, be an obstacle to vehicles driving along, not being able to see anyone coming out of the driveways. Along the south side of the property, this drops off into a ravine, and putting a screening fence in there just doesn't make sense. It's not going to provide the buffer that's intended. The applicant is proposing to put the signage on the north side and the west side of the building, and proposed monument sign will be between, be screened from the residential to the east by the structure itself. So, that's part of the justification, is the location of the proposed signage, the topography, the flagpole lot at the north end of the property, and then hopefully, and then as we look at some of the proposed, that's not correct. There is some screening proposed along, the landscape screening proposed along the east side of the parking lot, which will provide a little bit of screening. So, with all that in consideration, staff is recommending that the Phase One, which is what this final plan development is for, be approved with stipulations, which includes that Phase Two will require a major amendment to the plan development, where we'll re, take another look at that screening requirement along that east property line. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Dennis?
I'm, I don't, I believe this might not be the right slide. This, this, as you saw, this is 14PD43, so it came in in, before December, and I don't think we've updated the slides. I'm going to have to grab the file and take a look. So, the parking is actually, there's a little bit more on this side right here, and there's going to be landscaping proposed along the parking lot, providing additional screening. Is there a particular question? Phase Two is in this hatching, hatched area, as well as this additional parking. So, when that comes forward, it will be, also be medical office, but they'll have to go through a major amendment to the plan development. We'll review the screening fence requirement at that time again, which is, they're requesting that the screening requirement be waived for Phase One. There is, but as far as needing that 25-foot setback from Highway 16, it's, the DOT has indicated that they're okay with the reduction in setback along that property line. And it also gives us an additional five feet distance from the potential residential to the east.
Vicki?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When you go out to the site, I think you'll see that there is a significant topographic differential between the property and Highway 16. In addition, there's a large expanse of right-of-way for Highway 16. So, as the applicants laid this site out and in working with the state, I think it was determined that, just based on that elevation differential, it would be insignificant whether it's setback 20 feet or 25 feet. It's, it's going to appear to have a significant separation. When we looked at it and confirmed with the state that they were okay with it, it allowed them to squeeze in one more parking space, and that would be the benefit to those trying to use the site. So, we were in concurrence with that, based on the state's concurrence.
Motion's been made by Steve and seconded by Karen to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any other items for discussion? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, John?
Carla, what is the final drafting of the CIP restructure?
The Planning Commission's request to have a liaison to the CIP committee was approved. That's going to be incorporated in the ordinance and effective probably on June 19th. I don't have any specific information about that, because I've been out of the office for the last few days, but I did receive an email from Wade, my colleague, who drafted that CIP ordinance, that the Planning Commission liaison will be incorporated in the ordinance and, and move forward with that inclusion.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else?
I have a quick, quick comment, real quick. I was looking through some of the reports, and I just wanted to comment that I really liked the new project report, staff report, I guess we'll call it, especially the section where it talks about like core values, and, you know, it, it lists, you know, is it responsible development around infill and association to parks or rec or transportation? I, I think that's a real nice piece that's been added to that, so I just wanted to say thanks to the staff for, maybe that's been there for a little bit, and I'm just really keyed in on it, but I think it's a really nice format, it's more professional, and it provides some really good information to help us make good decisions, so, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Andy, and that's something that I might have mentioned for a discussion item two. This is the first time that we've used this format in full, and I think that Fletcher and Rob did an absolutely excellent job, that we're breaking new ground here, and it's, you know, we're teaching old dogs new tricks, and, and our, our goal is to remind you that everything we look at, we, we review that comprehensive plan that was adopted by the city not that long ago. And as you become more familiar with seeing where the information will be placed, unlike some of those longer, more paragraph-type reports, you kind of had to read from top to bottom before you could find the items of concern that you had, and the way they're structured now, you'll get a feel as you read them where to go to get specific information. I think it's going to be a lot more user-friendly, but if you do see something that, that does confuse you, or you would like more clarity to it, bring it to our attention, and we'll work on it. We're not set in our ways yet.
Quick, quick follow-up. I just like the fact that through the comprehensive plan, there were core values developed, and I think it's really good that we're using those core values to guide the decision-making process. And that's, that's a good practice, whether you're private enterprise or whether you're public enterprise, and I think it, it shows some good reasoning behind some of the decisions beyond a formatted data, you know, going through the motions. It's, we're touching some things that's beyond that. And so, that, particularly to me, I thought that that was a really nice addition, and I think it's, it's good to show our guidance, the guidance of our mission and our vision, so.
Agreed. Thank you, Andy, because that, I really think it's easier and gives information that's easy to access, so appreciate it. Entertain a motion to adjourn? Andy moved, and Karen seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.